All right, good morning, everybody. It's Tuesday morning here and we'll call the meeting to order. And our first item is to approve the agenda. And along with the agenda today, we do have two additions. I will read those off. The first one is authorization to seek bids for refurbishing elevator and family service center. And the second one is approval of correction to contract with KWB Associates for motor vehicle remodeling under alternate number five, fire alarm. The amount should have been thirteen sixty, thirteen six sixty instead of thirteen six hundred. The amount looked like thirteen six hundred, but the written words indicate thirteen six sixty. And words takes precedence. The contract needs to be increased by six dollars for the contract to the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand twenty-three, so we will act on that at the appropriate time today.
Move to approve with additions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, same motion carried. We have the bills before us.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried. Eight thirty-five, approval to purchase two fleet vehicles. Building manager, Georgia.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have an updated list here of the vehicles on there. It includes the repairs for the vehicles and then there was an error on motor vehicle, number three. We, in the past, we've had actually the nine vehicles, or excuse me, the seven vehicles that are used for everyday travel for various departments. But then as the increase for various departments demands increased, probation has two that are assigned to them and then the assessors have two vehicles that are assigned to them and motor vehicle has the one. The assessors, those are dedicated pretty much to their department, so ours probation. Motor vehicle, we do use that one on a intermittent basis here and there. But as the requests have increased for the usage of the vehicles, at this time, we're requesting two additional vehicles. We are going to monitor vehicle, I believe it's number seven there with the high repair bills and come auction time, if it continues to increase in repairs, we would consider maybe sending that one to the auction in the spring. Otherwise, the Colts are attached from the state bid purchasing list and we're recommending the purchase of the Ford Fusion and the Dodge Caravan. The purpose of the van is social services has a need for when they transport the children to have an additional van, so we'd like to see one additional van for the fleet, which would bring us to a total of three.
Trying to find my copy of that.
This, who's the chair, is it? Go ahead. This is. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, John.
What, okay, so the, trying to figure out where the amount of money we got in the account and what we've got left and so on. Is that?
That's on the first page.
We've got?
We'd have approximately twenty-three thousand remaining in the account after we purchased the two vehicles.
How much do we put in there each year?
It goes by the mileage that we use on the current vehicles and I'm not sure after we confirm that, Lori, but I want to say it's like forty-five something.
In terms of what goes into internal service? Is that what the question was?
For vehicles, how much?
Well, typically, that's, the way that's done is they take the purchase value and then they also give it a salvage value. And then that difference then, based on number of years, they calculate an annual payment that goes back into an internal service fund plus its three percent, isn't it, Brian?
Yeah, it's, yes, it is.
So, so that's, it's just a way to, so instead of coming up with the big money all at one time, we do it over a course of three or four or five years, depending on that particular vehicle, so.
With that many vehicles, we, do we normally replace a couple each year?
We've been like on an every other year schedule. We don't have an actual set schedule. It kind of goes by the mileage and then the repair.
Okay. So we'd have a net increase in one vehicle is what you're saying, right?
At this time, we're, we would keep two additional vehicles. If number seven were to increase in repairs, we may consider sending that one to the auction or?
Okay, so we have two increase, two.
Right. Or possibly move that one on to the motor vehicle department where there's less usage and then get rid of the one that's on a motor vehicle.
So when we keep, when we keep them staying, Georgia, do we keep adding funds to that vehicle through the internal service fund?
We have been. I don't believe we have. We, they're reimbursed by the mileage per each department and then that goes, Lori has figured out a rate that actually I think goes towards the purchase and the gas repayment for the gas, but no, we do not.
We have to pay sales tax on these, huh? That didn't change?
The vehicles, I believe, are still on the sales tax.
I know in law enforcement, the unmarked, we had to pay sales tax. The marked squads, we did not.
Right.
So I don't, so would that be, so if we label our county vehicles with our county logo, does that make them?
Exempt.
Exempt? Well, we should check that.
No, Mr. Chair, I don't believe it does. Just the emergency response vehicles are exempt.
Okay, so it's a qualify.
And I think that was something the legislature.
They've always been exempt, though, the?
Yes, they have. And that was not changed. It was one, the one exception is probably to the sales tax was transportation issues, pickups, trucks and things that they didn't exempt.
Was it the road graders and all of that equipment is?
That is now exempt.
All right, what's the board's wishes?
I think a motion approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the vehicles. Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried. Thanks, Georgia.
Thanks, Governor.
Okay, our eight forty item is with our county engineer. He must have hit a train. Literally. All right, let's go to our, if we can, we'll go to our agenda additions while we're waiting for Dave. And Brian, are you taking these two items?
Sure.
So the first one is authorize refurbishing elevator and the family service center?
Right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We did talk about that a little bit last session when we went ahead with the motor vehicle bids and the funds available. And how we'd like to do that is Robbie's been collecting information from the elevator companies, has put together the bid information and we'd like to go ahead and advertise for bids for. And how we plan to do that, with your permission, is that we will bid for one replacement or both the replacements because they both need to be replaced. One is really giving us some problems, but if it saves us quite a bit of money to do them both at the same time, then we would look at that. But what we're seeking right now is just approval to go out for bids on them, not for the approval of doing the project.
John.
Refurbish, what, you know, what do we mean by refurbish? Is it mechanical refurbishing or is it?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we also, and I'm looking at Vicki, she's smiling a little bit, is what really played around with what word we should use, replace, rebuild. We don't feel the car needs to be replaced, but all of the mechanical things, the cabling's, the controls, all of that needs to be replaced and so we use the word refurbish instead of.
Mr. Chair? Move to approve authorization.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? So this will be coming back, right?
Yeah, absolutely, for approval.
Is this still the original elevators in there? All the equipment?
I would assume so. I'm sure it's had its maintenance over time, you know.
In fact, we have a service contract.
You don't want to be riding down a scary elevator. All right, so, okay, all in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried. We'll go into the next one here. This will just take a minute here, Brian, on item number two on the addition.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chair, on that one as well. And what we have there, we're asking for a six hundred dollar addition. And the way the alternate three was written, and I know you have it in front of you there, but for the public's sake, it was, it was approved at thirteen thousand six hundred dollars and on the bid, it is written, looks like thirteen thousand six hundred and then iffy, sixty dollars, but it's written out thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. So the architects had interpreted it as thirteen thousand six hundred when in fact it's thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. So we're asking your approval of the sixty dollars. And I hate to say addition because it's a correction instead of addition.
Well, we'll just make an amendment to it.
Yes, 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 that's what we want.
All right, we have a, we have a motion to amend to correct the dollar amount by sixty dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Overboll, good morning.
Good morning, Dave.
Approval to adjust moving permit fee structure.
Yeah, I've only got the one item and it has a little bit to do with how we've been doing business lately with the moving permits at the highway department. Years ago, when we put the online permit together, we kind of decided that due to staff time, we felt it only appropriate to charge a small fee covering our expenses. We had heavier, you know, a medium sized move and a heavy move. Medium move would be about eighty thousand, which is the legal limit, up to about a hundred. And then anything over a hundred thousand, we charged fifty dollars. So it was twenty-five for the first twenty thousand pounds and then another twenty-five dollars for heavier over that. And what we've been kind of noticing is there's actually kind of an additional, kind of a part to this, when you get real heavy moves and house moves that are taking a considerable amount more time, to a point where I would recommend that we keep the first kind of a structure from eighty to a hundred at twenty-five dollars. Anything up from a hundred up to a hundred and sixty thousand pounds is a move that doesn't take a lot more time. Most of our bridges can handle it and I feel that's still appropriate to charge fifty dollars for that. But anything over a hundred and sixty thousand pounds takes a little bit more time. It could involve up to three to four people, our, our bridge inspector, possibly Nathan and myself, both kind of discussing this thing. As everybody knows, there's been a few bridges around the country and specifically Minnesota that went down and we just don't really want to be responsible for allowing a move that would cause such a disaster. So we would like to see an additional fifty dollars for a total of a hundred dollar fee charge for anything over a hundred and sixty thousand pounds. We don't get an awful lot of them, but certain piece of equipment do weigh that much and we probably get about maybe a dozen to twenty per year that are in this category. Probably the most significant thing that we've been seeing in our area is house moves, mostly due to the buyouts, but those house moves take a lot of work. They probably work on the permit itself for maybe two weeks before they even get to it. I think there's still probably a few houses around the county that never quite got finished. There's one, I think, by the Hancock Concrete Products there. I think there's some, a couple houses still sitting there. But I think any, any house move of any kind, not just a small trailer house or a single garage or something, but if we got an actual house, it's, it's, takes, there again, probably three to four people. We usually have those things run by our consultants, so they also do have to pay for an engineering analysis of our bridge. Each element is looked at, so I guess I'd recommend a hundred dollar fee for the house moves itself as well.
John.
Okay, Dave, you, so you don't, on the permits, you don't just permit them to move. You actually, you know exactly what route they're taking, exactly what bridges they're crossing?
Absolutely.
And do you have to have people out there during the move?
It kind of depends on, on the over dimensional part of it. If they take up both lanes, I believe the sheriff's department is a pilot car that kind of escorted by the sheriff's department. If it takes up most of one lane, then they have to have pilot cars front and back that they hire on their own, so it kind of depends on what's going on. But there, there's usually, at a minimum, there's going to be flags and flashing lights and then if they get a little bit wider or taller or bigger, then you're going to have a pilot car that they hire. And then, and there again, I think that's changed too, is in working with Matt Searle, those pilot car people have to be certified. They can't just be, you know, any kind of job boat type of company. So there's certification on that and we've added that criteria to our moving permit. And then if they're real big, then they have a sheriff's department escort. That's kind of the three different types of moves that we have.
Because if you have to have staff out there, certainly the hundred dollars is not covering our expenses.
And it's usually not highway department staff on the type of escorts. It's mostly just internal on the office, taking a look at the roads and if there's a better route. A lot of times, they're trying to do something to get out of going a certain way, the more logical way. So if they're going around a bunch of state roads just to try to get away from a state permit, sometimes we work with them and sometimes we just don't feel it's, it's a good decision.
I'll move to approve the changes.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same motion carried.
I've got a question for Dave on another matter. What, what is the, what was the policy this weekend for, for snow removal? I had got, I got a call early on Saturday morning that old fifty-two was, was in real bad shape.
It's one of those deals where I think we've got our, our maintenance foreman's a little new. He and I talked on Saturday. In fact, I called Saturday morning and asked if he had guys out because I was getting calls as well. I think he just kind of underestimated things. He's got to probably get a little better feel for how big the county is because if you drive south of Morehead ten miles, it's completely different out east. And I think that's probably what happened. He and I discussed how far we should go on Saturday's work. And I said, well, maybe you should check with the guys and find out kind of what they've done in the past. And we, we made a huge mistake. We should have completely went over the entire county on Saturday because Monday was supposed to be a holiday. Well, Monday morning, the phone went berserk and I was at, I was at work almost all day yesterday and I'm sure there was probably fifty to seventy missed calls at the highway department. So Barnesville had school yesterday and I think nobody in our department realized that. We kind of, you know, I got calls from the Barnesville Transportation Director, very unhappy, but we did get everybody out. Obviously, we were later than we normally would have been. Today, they're going to be out, but yeah, we kind of messed up. It's a total deja vu. We've had this before on, when we have a Monday holiday and if there's winter weather on Saturday or Sunday and we're not out, and then Monday, we're not out again, it's, it's like a compounding effect. And we've had it before. I've gotten chewed out numerous times. I should have told them and remembered it, but I kind of, what I, in hindsight, I should have told them on Saturday. I said, remember Monday, we're not really supposed to be out here, so you got to get everything done on Saturday. Not to say I couldn't have blown in a little bit on Sunday, but when you don't be, when you're not out on Saturday and then you're not out Monday morning right away, you're, you're going to get calls.
But that mean, he meant it happened on?
Friday night.
Thursday into Friday and Friday night, so it's.
Yeah, and I, and I talked to him Saturday and what he was kind of looking at, it was kind of spotty, I think, because the wind was so, so heavy, you know, or so, so much. But the areas that piled up, it did pile up and the other areas might have blown clean. So I think he kind of, he's trying to get a feel for things and I'm trying to direct the township people that are calling me to also talk to Brian so he can hear firsthand kind of what their, you know, their complaints are. And I know he talked to the transportation director down in Barnesville, but yeah, big mistake on our part and apologies to all the county residents. We should have, should have done a little better job, went a little further on Saturday and then we probably wouldn't have had quite so much work on Monday, but bad deal.
Good experiences.
How's your budget doing for snow removal up to date?
Just kind of getting going, I guess, but I, I, it's kind of hard to tell at this time.
Should be okay now, it's no budget.
It's been, it's been pretty decent, though. I mean, even, even at the end of 2013, it wasn't bad. We had a horrible February and March and I, well, we were over quite a bit on fuel last year. I think it was over probably about eighty thousand dollars or so on fuel alone, but we were quite a bit under on some of our maintenance projects. Our maintenance foreman that left us early didn't quite get as much work as we had in the past, so there was over a hundred thousand dollars left in our maintenance budget, so it kind of offset itself. But, you know, it'll be interesting to see, we'll be meeting here shortly with regard to the township maintenance numbers and that'll be reflective of all the maintenance costs for 2013, so.
That's coming up, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, I think next, early next month.
Have we, did we get that date?
Yeah, I wonder if, is it the fourth, February fourth?
That's, that's the Tuesday.
Tuesday, the fourth or the eleventh. I know I, I worked with Ann on that a little bit.
February fourth.
And.
And Ann will be there?
Yeah, yeah, she's struggling on trying to get those down like she does every year, so.
And one more question, too. Last year, didn't we, didn't, didn't we invite some of the township supervisors to come in when we were?
We are going to have that meeting again.
Okay, we're going to do that. I think that worked out really well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah. And I'll, I'll try to send that schedule out to everybody today so you can see what our, our plan is for that.
For the timing?
Yep.
Thank you, Dave.
You betcha.
Have a good day. Committee reports. Grant?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for you? Okay, John?
I had a look, I can't even remember where I was last week. I was spending most of the time in Fargo at the conference.
Oh, yes.
And did you have, so we had a, I think, a very successful conference. It was a great crowd. First, first session, I was just amazed how the room was filled. I think there was nearly five hundred people altogether there and very, very enthused. I mean, I think they, you know, people sat through most of the, most of the sessions and a lot of networking going on and so on, so I think it was very positive. I did leave, leave on Wednesday to go over to the Historical Society Board Meeting and it was pretty routine business there. Yesterday, I had a meeting with Lakeland Mental Health Finance Committee and we did some allocation of, of monies, end of the year revenues over expenditures that we decided how to allocate those funds. That's, that's it.
Okay. John forgot to mention the honor that he got at the Red River Basin.
Yeah, yeah, well, somebody should tell us about this, huh? Brian, you going to tell us about this? Frank was there, too, so.
No, it was a very nice presentation they gave John for all the work that he's done and I was happy to be there and see that happen. I was just a.
Appreciated you being there.
I think he, people really thought that he served it. I mean, I know that he served it and it was a great presentation.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you. It was a complete surprise.
You did deserve that, very much, okay. Frank?
Ah, the only meeting I met with FM cog, wasn't a meeting, I just gone over my duties as chairman and stuff, that's the only thing I did, I guess.
Today Personnel Issues Committee Meeting and talked about sick leave and things will be coming in front of the board within the next week or two on that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
And the only, I did not make the Greater Fargo-Morehead Economic Development Meeting. That was the day we were having that nice storm, so from where I was to get in there, I couldn't do it. Did you, did you make it, by chance?
I did by phone.
Oh, by phone?
I was in Minneapolis.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I had signed up to go, but I couldn't get out of my driveway. So, and then, then my other meeting, of course, was the same one this morning with the PIC and like Wayne said, well, something will be coming soon on this modifying the policy for sick leave vacation contributions to, to others.
One more, I guess FM cog meeting that I was supposed to go last Thursday, it was canceled, will be tomorrow, tomorrow noon.
Okay, right. Mr. Berg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple things, I guess, on, on email that I think I forwarded to you that I had received from Commissioner Wayland also is on the MRCC, the Rhode County Caucus, and they had forwarded out some information on, it appears like the governor is suggesting a billion, just about a billion dollar bonding issue. And I was just a little concerned that, and I'm sure Morehead and Oakport are looking at the bonding issues through some other mechanism on that, but just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of what those requests were and if.
I think it would be, I think it would be good for our county board to send in a resolution of support for, for both those communities to.
Right.
To, to get those, those needed funds to complete those projects.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring that next week then.
Okay.
So a resolution on it, so.
I would like to comment about that, too. I guess I'm, my understanding, there wasn't flood relief for any community, was there in the?
No, there isn't, so I'm assuming that's coming through some other mechanism. I guess that's why I sent it out. I was a little concerned that there wasn't anything for Oakport or, or Morehead on there. If you guys would like me to follow up a little bit more on that and I'll do those resolutions and I'll probably, I'll check with Mike Redlinger, I haven't done that yet.
Should have checked with Lachusman at the, I did not get a chance to talk to him at the conference.
Well, it was so funny because when Bruce was here last time, he said that the projects had moved way up on, but if they moved way up in the marge, then they've just moved up to nothing.
Yeah, he did say that, so.
Have you talked, anybody talked to Morehead or Oakport about their, what their plans are?
I know there's, I know they're individually, you know, they're working with their, their groups and their people from, you know.
I think a resolution from us would be very important.
I, I agree.
Very good, go do that.
And maybe you can get from Michael Redlinger and then from, from Bruce what the dollar amounts are for, and we can incorporate them into that letter.
Okay.
Thank you. Any else?
Brian?
Yes, I do have a couple things here. The, we did have Highway Tracking Meeting last week and I know Dave was just here, but there was about seven or eight items that were covered. You guys really covered a lot of issues that try, the truck size and weight legislation and the wheelage tax criteria is coming along very well. I think that's going to come to the board for final approval. It seems like they've got everything down on that. They've done a real good job on that. And they talked about the present paving conditions, which I think everybody is always concerned about and the moving permit is what he brought before we did it. And so he really covered a lot of topics. We moved on along on it. Remember, we were kind of tight timeline for the next meeting, so it had to go pretty quick. So, and then, thank you for allowing me to attend the Red River Basin Conference. I think it went really well. And, and I do want to echo my congratulations to Commissioner Everett for the Leadership Award and some of the things that Maury Lanning, who was the, the co- MC along with John Fort, expressed about, about Commissioner Everett is, is very true. And I guess I've learned in my three and a half years here that John is really a stable factor in all of these committees that he serves on. He, he doesn't jump to conclusions. He, he listens to everybody. I know he sure listens here and is willing to consider all aspects of it, but yet is certainly willing to take a firm stand on things, too. And that was some of the things that were said and, are appreciated by everyone in this community, John. So my congratulations to you as well.
I agree with that, too.
And during that time period, we also had a short administrative diversion meeting in regards to, I think you saw a little bit of it in the, in the newspaper, so I just mentioned it today so that you're all aware of it. The DNR had written a letter in regards to the Environmental Impact Statement, the EIS that they're writing. They're concerned that the diversion plans to go ahead with the ring diking around Oxbow, Hickson and Baki and they feel that, they're really asking the question, why are you moving forward with this if it's a diversion project and we have not ruled on the EIS? And I think you heard Chair Van U at the Red River Basin when, when he spoke about the update on it, is that, that that is a separate project, that that would go forward with state funding and, and local funding, no matter that if the diversion goes forward or not. So, so you'll be hearing some more things about that, but I think he saw an article in the paper on it today, so.
And I'd like to follow up on that, too. I, you know, and actually, I know it, it potentially brought the local Minnesota entities, entities into it, meaning Clay County and the city of Morehead and Buffalo, Red River, Watershed District. Important factors that the DNR needs to keep in mind is that there is no Minnesota money going into that project. That is fully paid for. As a matter of fact, significant dollars were approved by the legislature to, to do that project, so it's basically been a project supported at the state legislature on the North Dakota side. When this process was talked about, there's, there's an MOU that they refer. When this process was talked about, um, on, there's, there's an MOU that they refer to, and, and the, um, um, Diversion Authority signed the MOU, but in addition to the Diversion Authority signing the MOU, they, they wanted to have the North Dakota entities also sign the MOU, and the reason they wanted to have the North Dakota entities sign the MOU was in the event that the Diversion Authorities and the project never went through, that there would still be somebody responsible, uh, to cover the, all the necessities to get it completed and to, to come up, establish a, a plan for it. Uh, that MOU was never signed by the City of Morehead, that MOU was never signed by Clay County, it was never signed by the Minnesota, uh, Buffalo Red Watershed District, and not one nickel of Minnesota money is going into it. Uh, when this was talked about early on in, in the meetings, I remember raising the question and asking, because that was one of my concerns, is would this happen regardless as to whether or not the diversion went through? And the answers I kept on getting from the Cass County resident members on the Diversion Authority is, yes, it would. And so even within that letter in, in the Minnesota, that letter from Minnesota, it states that if it, if were to be done regardless, then it would probably, you know, so I, I think in the end, this'll all, all work itself out, but...
Yeah.
But there, certainly the Minnesota entities were, uh, we are not planning any construction on the Minnesota side, um, or, or, we are not intending to do any construction on the Minnesota side. Certainly, even while an EIS is going on, there's planning that can be done on the Minnesota side, because, uh, the one thing that I heard from my visit to the, the day when I was with the Comstock folks, is that if this thing were to go through, they didn't want to, you know, I got the impression from them that they didn't want to wait to have, have the whole big, long levee system put in place and have their ring dike done last, you know? So, so, so that was a kind of an, you know, fully understanding that they probably don't like the project anyway, none of it, but the fact of the matter is, they also knew that if it did happen, they want to be protected before the thing kicks in, and, and we kind of assured them that that would happen, but, and that would require Minnesota money, but that could not be done until after the EIS is done, the Minnesota EIS. So, and today, uh, we're also looking at having to increase the, the funds through the Diversion Authority from seven hundred and fifty to one point two million, I believe it is, to help pay for the cost of that study.
Right.
So, that's what I know.
And, and a positive note, too, you know, there's been a couple hardship requests on the Minnesota side.
Yes.
And that's been pushed forward, too, has been granted, so that's, that's a positive thing in regards to those situations. Uh, did some things with some personnel grading issues and, and frankly, I remember last year, or maybe it was even about eighteen months ago or so, we talked about the system that we, that the county went through about five years ago with Bjorkland and Associates, and how are we going to keep that current? And I know, I, I think it was Chairman Campbell that, uh, specifically asked, uh, for a system, so I've talked with HR about that and getting, moving forward on either a twenty or twenty-five percent of the, the ratings or the classifications reviewed every year so that we can keep that ongoing. I think that was your, the, the commission's request that we keep current on that, so, uh, we had spent some time on that last week as well. We had PIC this morning, and, and what we're struggling with there is a little bit of a change in policy of the, of the leave donation, and we'll work through that. It's been going on for quite a while, but it does create some unique, uh, examples that we have to deal with. And, um, with that, I guess the only thing I have left is, is on behalf of the county employees, uh, we've started a new year, and, and you folks granted a general increase of two percent for 2014, and, and want to thank you for that. That, uh, you, I mean, you step forward and you're, you're, uh, meeting the requests of the employees, and it's been, it's been pretty stable, and, and I think the economy is getting a little better, and, uh, we just appreciate that, so thank you.
Well, they're out there working hard, and they're deserving of it, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just wanted to, uh, remind folks that I will not be here next week, uh, for the meeting, and neither will be here for the other government retreat, and I'll be going to this public health meeting in...
That's right.
California, and then we're going to stay for a few days.
I will probably be, showing up a little bit late for the retreat, but I'll get there.
That's right.
What time does it start? Starts at nine o'clock. Nine is, nine to ten is kind of a social...
Nine fifty is presentation.
Okay, anything else for the good order, Vicki? All right, we are...